Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluffing these four of all tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his bluffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure Ace High, like Ace High has some showdown value. He had Ace five and when he raises the turn with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that, he actually gets called. And on this kind of board, like what, what hands did you have in your folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some misdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo uh got away from it. Ooh, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise a seventy-five hundred is ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with horse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. I thought call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raises. So this kind of falls back at it, bro.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamberer for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse balls. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future streams. And we, we're aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very good point. You're right, you're right, you're right.
That was the best. You'd say everything. You won.
Yeah.
Straight up.
You won. I, I, I just, yeah, I just.
Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this. You're not opening this.
Button cut off. Hi, Dackel Jack. Under the gun one.
Come on now, okay. I, um. So, let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, it wouldn't be a quit.
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, let's play it.
I'm going to cry if he says he's folding here. If he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament, and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah! Yes! I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three points score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold!
Good, bro.
Wait, you heard what he said.
Yeah!
I'm off the table.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold. It says right here.
The excuses to open? If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K, I'm opening this, yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life!
Oh, that's hilarious. Hey, everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from King Queen? Who in the- Who does that?
Who the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him.
Yeah, I agree, and I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my, my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through things and, and so it's a good way to start your session for sure.
Alright, alright guys, this is it.
What's up, you wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Kowas playing about deep hitting about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very aggressive. And this, uh, ten dollar buy-in, and here are the options to fold, to call, to raise the twelve hundred, raise the- What? Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred, and my man's given options twelve and forty-two hundred. So it's already getting, uh, kinda spicy.
That's so nasty. To be on the site with these other crushers and their well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too, you know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh, all coaches on the site, so very highly respectable. Quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well, you know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He just have the ace of clubs in his hand. That's interesting though. I thought that was interesting.
I'm pretty sure you got, you didn't do that bad. Forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The back.
I agree with that. I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one, so, you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know.
Calling, guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright, guys, we're checking, I guess. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise, and there's an anti-inplay, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward, you want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
I'll go call with the armadillo hat.
Alright, and-
I would fold the game though, for the record, in case I was, we're winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
No, no, we can't win. This is a pretty rough spot.
Damn it!
Mm-hmm. Where you gonna get my chat?
Get my chat?
They like, they like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do a, I can do a ten dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this, sorry. We'll do this. We'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man, and then, you know. We'll do it, we'll do it every week a couple times.
So, it's tie.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool because we have two ties, and then a win from you and a win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even stevens.
This is awesome. I love it.
You know who-
Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner, my man Sevz, we're getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one. We're here, we're here, we're here, we're here. It's Saturday, guys. We're live. We're ready to go. Welcome to the PC.com Study Session Stream today. Sadly, I believe it's only going to be me. Crazy Six is out playing for a main event seat. So he's got some big stuff going on today. He'll be back. Rumor has it, he may, may, may be doing another one of these during the week. Uh, but I'll leave that up to him. Don't make no promises, but, um, that's what we were talking about yesterday when we talked about it. And, uh, yeah, there we go. Any of you guys are new, this is the PokerCoaching.com Study Session Stream. We'll be using the PokerCoaching.com content where I create content, my man Crazy Sixes creates content, and they got guys like Matt Affleck, Assassinato, Lexi Gavin, uh, Jonathan Jaffe, uh, Jonathan Little, Assassinato, uh, Evan Jarvis, and anyone else? Acevedo, anyone else I may have missed? So that's what we'll do. We're taking these quizzes. It is your time to be a chat pro. Let me know what you think. We try to keep it super interactive. Um, we'll listen to the quiz. We'll see what you guys wanna do, and then I'll say what I would do. And then we'll go from there, maybe, uh, do a giveaway at the end of this sucker as well. And, uh, there we go. There we go. Got a good start out there with twenty-six people right out there to kick it up. Good morning! Stacked off, good to see ya. Holdin' nuts out there, Wisco. Happy birthday, Wisco, my man, Fistbumps Buddy. Happy birthday, brother. Happy birthday. Ass nine, Bowline, Cyrus, I see you. Uh, where's Matt? That's kinda weird. I'm sure Matt's out there somewhere. Anyways. Alright, guys, I guess we'll, uh, get the sucker off, huh? What do you think? Let's do it. Alright, so, let me know if any of these you see. I don't know how well you guys can see them. They look pretty good. Let me see. Can you read them? Yeah, they're legible. If you see any of these you wanna do in particular, this'll be an interesting one. I think we should take, start off with Lexi doing Kings. Uh, cuz you know how I, why I suck with Kings. So I think we'll play that one. Uh, Gap Poker, good morning, buddy. Good to see you. Voss in the house, my man. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Alright, let's play this King's Hand. Should've lost it. There it is. There we go. And, uh, let me know if the volume is much better. That'll, uh, be interesting to see because we're not having the Skype call at the same time. So if the volume's much better for you, let me know. Jellyfish is King, King Fold, he knows, he's seen the stream. He knows how we roll. Although, they've been doing good for us. It's the year of the Kings, Jelly. We're turning it around. We're turning it around. Alright, let's check this out.
Hi, everyone. This is Lexi Gavin from PokerCoaching.com. And today I'm gonna talk about a hand that I played at the Borgata in a five hundred dollar tournament they had. Um, so, sitting with roughly seventy-five big blinds, it folds to me in a low jack, and I'm gonna bump it up to two hundred and fifty. Um, I like going two and a half X here. Seventy-five big blinds effective. If we were a hundred, I'd probably go more three X, uh, you know, maybe three point two, three point five. Um, fifty big blinds and between, between thirty big blinds and fifty, I usually choose a sizing between maybe two point four and two point seven. So, this deep, uh, I like two and a half, two and a half X. So, we open it up to two hundred and fifty, the hijack calls, cutoff calls, small blind calls.
This is just like my tournament. Five ways with frickin' Kings.
Not the most ideal thing when you have pocket Kings for, to go five ways, but we're gonna see a flop. So, the flop is nine of clubs, eight of spades, ten of clubs, small blind checks, uh, big blind checks, checks to me. So what do we do? Do you check, bet six hundred and fifty or bet eight hundred and fifty?
Everybody coming along. Jamie Good, what's up? Good morning, my man. Jack Rag in the house. What's up, buddy? Good to see you. Good to see, good to see you. So this is like exactly Mendo in the house too. Good morning, buddy. Um. Exactly like we see in my stream, right? You raise the Kings, there's five callers, and we get the worst board in Merka. BQ BBQ says we bet. Uh, Red Dad Ben, I see a bunch of six fifties streaming. Wisco says check, going against the grain there. See a couple of sizing up too, cuz it is a wet board. And we do not have the King of Clubs. Jack Rag checking as well. This is gonna be interesting. Um. This could be really interesting. I, I'm really curious to see what Lexi's gonna do in comparison to what I would do in this spot. Gab going eight fifty, he sizes up. Don't like the board, but bet six fifty. Super coordinated wet. Agreed, 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 agreed. Super awkward, super coordinated, super wet. Ocean coming in with the check. I see you, I see you. Looks like it's starting to taper off here. Yeah, man, I, uh, Cyrus has bet five hundred, so I guess it's six fifty. Shit, I think if we're gonna bet here, we should probably size up, uh, on a super wet board. All the draws are coming, right? The club draws, Jack X, even maybe things like King Queen with a club. They got two overs, they got backdoor flush, they got gut shot. Um, obviously a ten X or nine X hands are coming. Um, seven X hands, there's five of them, so six, seven suited, eight, seven suited, things of that nature. So I would size up. Mendo Bruce is shoved. He's gonna stuff the seventy-five bigs. Uh. Not be on a check fold here, says Wisco. So, I think I would check here as well, mostly because we're so multi-way. There's so many two pairs, sets, flush draws that when we raise this, they're gonna re-raise us, and we're in a weird spot. Um, straight draws, open to straight draws, same this. We should've pulled a pre-flop, says BBQ. No doubt. Uh, let me look something up here real quick, cuz like if we're against a flush draw with Kings and no draw, so let's see, it's not a club, uh, we got King of Spades, King of Hearts, King of Spades, King of Hearts. Uh, I'll show you guys what I'm doing. Give me one sec. Let me bink this, uh, through. We can leave the chat on and turn my cam on so you can see my face. Alright, so I'm looking over here, this little odds calculator thing, right? We have Kings, Spades, whatever. We'll put the board down here. It's nine of clubs, ten of clubs, and eight of spades, right? So now we can kinda see like, what are we doing, like, against like, what if they have like, I don't know, eight, seven of clubs? We're actually behind. I don't know if you guys can see that, but it's about sixty, forty. Um, so we're actually behind eight, seven of clubs. What about like, six, seven of clubs? Seven, eight clubs is an option? Like seven, eight of clubs gotta be pretty bad too, right? Yep, even worse. Trying to think of what other seven X and, uh, clubs we have? They've got something like backdoor flush draw with the open-ender. We're ahead fifty-five, forty-two? Man, so we're not in the greatest shape here. When Queen Jack, we're screwed. Right? Ninety-six percent favorite with straight. They already have it. They have something like, let's say Queen, oh, that doesn't work. Let's say Jack of Clubs, ten of Hearts, fifty-one, forty-seven. So, we're not in the greatest shape. Um, I would be checking, and then like, I would be check calling? Um, Wisco says he's not opposed to a check fold. I mean, I would check fold maybe if it went like, raise, re-raise. Whew, raise, re-raise, call. Um, put a bluff in there. Uh, give me an example of a bluff. Like I was trying to put, like, it wouldn't be just stone bluffs, right? We're five-handed. So it's very few stone bluffs BBQ, right? So it's always gonna be like, I don't know, King Jack with a club, right? That'd be, it's always gonna be a semi-bluff. So King Jack with a club. We're ahead sixty-five, thirty-five, so pretty good there, if he's just got that. Queen Jack already gives us the straight. And I don't think there's gonna be very many like Jack nine off and stuff like that. You know what I mean? See, with Ace six off, I don't think, Ace six of Hearts, I don't think they ever bluff this board five and eights, right? I think we see that so infrequently. Maybe like Ace six of Spades? What does that look like? Ace six of Spades, we're seventy, thirty against that, with an over in the backdoor, flush draw, and a gut shot. Yeah, they seven of Spades, sixty, forty-ish. So I think those are his most likely bluffs. I don't think he's got any bear bluffs sometimes. Ace eight of Clubs, we're gonna be in big trouble against that hand, I think. Ace eight of Clubs, they're ahead fifty-one, forty-six because there's gonna be some splits. Yeah. So there you go. Uh, ginger checking. Uh, even with check, get a bet and a call from blinds, we can really consider folding. I mean, a bet and a call, I think there's still draws and like, bear ten X and nine X out there. I don't know if we could just fold a bet and a call, but I'm definitely gonna go pocket draw. Um. Cyrus going eight fifty. Got to probet to the max to find out where we are in the hand. Option two, check raise huge. Okay, I think probet five ways, you're not gonna get that much information. Except that people hit this board like crazy, and we're gonna have a lot of turns and rivers that are nasty. And, uh, check raise huge, I think is a mistake too, because then the only things coming along are hands that beat you. There's even draws out there that are ahead of us right now. Uh, Mad Dog coming in with twenty-eight months running out before it snows. Just wanted to show some toe love. Thank you, Mad Dog. I appreciate it, Jay. Wow, we were twenty-eight months in the house. Alright, uh, five-handed, I think we are behind here a lot. I do. Checking is more conservative line, revalue turn. Exactly, exactly, exactly. Mendo says shove. Problem with shoving then, Mendo, is that we only get called by hands that beat us, or hands that have massively good equity against us. So we're gonna do that. Checking is the way, I think. I'm gonna check, check. Let's see what happens. Ten points, check!
I gave checking a score of ten, uh, bet six hundred and fifty a score of two, and bet eight hundred and fifty a score of five. Um, I think checking here is good. This is a very wet texture. Um, literally hits everyone's range. Um, I think this is a perfect spot to, um, pot control here with the po, with the pocket Kings. Um, so, betting, if we are gonna bet, um, I do prefer a larger sizing, so I believe, I believe eight hundred and fifty is better than six hundred and fifty.
Hundred percent.
Um, you wanna size up to, um, charge them for their draws and, uh, protect your equity. Um, and this is just, uh, this type of flop is, you're likely to get check raised here pretty often. So, on a flop like this, especially multi-way, definitely proceed with caution. Um, so check, check back here, see a, see a turn, and evaluate, um, the action on, uh, what, what you're gonna do on the turn.
So that does any merit to shoving, does not equity, draws, behind. The problem there is like yourself, you're jamming like-
The turn is a three of Hearts.
Sorry, Lexi, you thought you were done. I mean to cut you off.
Checks us, we check.
Alright, so, uh, the problem with that is that, uh, we're gonna jam like, what is it, seventy-two blinds into a thirteen-blind pot? Like, that's just risking way too much. We only get called by, by better. Uh, Red Ducks is, who has the game sheet tonight? I have no idea. Um. You know, I don't, I'm not really part of the store members anymore, so I don't know what's going on over there. I know they have a home game today. I have no idea who it is. I think it's Cancer Survivor? I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um. Queen Jack calls a shove? Yeah, that's true. And then things like, like the eight, seven of clubs that was ahead of us, right? Something like that, with an over and a flush draw, you know, always with great equity. Uh, cool. Sorry, Lexi, I didn't mean to cut you off. Let's see what she has to say. We checked, what happens?
Hijack checks, cutoff checks, the turn is a three of Hearts, small blind checks, and the big blind leads out. He is a Borgata reg, and he bets seven hundred and fifty. It's on us, so what should we do? Should we fold, call, or raise to twenty-two hundred?
Alright, so checked around. I find that very interesting. I think there's some information in that. For sure, for sure. Um, and then the big line leads into us. Cyrus just calling. What are you guys doing? Do we raise it? Do we call it? Hook is raising the two point two. Hook, you raised two point two. He's got sixty-five hundred behind. Any J on, you're calling? Just trying to verify there. Rad Dad call, fold, then you raise. Jack Rag's calling. Holdin' nuts, call. I know it says hold him, he's nuts, but like, I've just been speeding through his holdin' nuts so much that it's, you're getting the abbreviated version. Jellyfish call, Gab's calling. Mendo Bruce says raise, please raise. BBQ says three, one on, it's call. Lots of calls, lots of calls, couple of raises. Wisco's calling. Ginger's calling. Where's Machine Gun? Did anybody watch his stream last night? Was he up late? Surprised, he's usually on time for these things. Yeah, so, I, I think I'm calling too. Um, I think we're in the exact same spot. And the one thing is, uh, Phone of Francis, both, I, I love it. Um. You can't raise a three, still act. Agreed, top price. Um, yeah, and, um, of all the people to bet here, like, the big blind and the small blind were the ones that are one, most likely to hit this with the range, right? There's the guys that have a lot of those six sevens and like, eight nines, nine tens, and they would've checked to the razor, trying to catch a C bet, and you know, potentially check raise, check call, whatever they're gonna do. Excuse me, so the blinds coming, uh, the bet coming from the big blind is actually one, not, not, not that great. Not that great. We jams, not calling. He raised it first, we re-raise, and it comes all in, guaranteed behinds concept. Mine's tell us that, except he could still have Jack ten, Queen ten, King ten, check the flop, figures, people with straights don't check around, you know, they're gonna bet for value. Um, and so now he's betting for value and protection, and then going with it because we shouldn't have too many Queen decks, right? There he is! There's Marlin. I knew he, I knew he had to be out there. I knew he had out there. I'm afraid to put a better price. Uh, the problem is, we don't know, we're either way ahead or way behind right now. And so like, I was saying before, like, this is a pretty volatile board, and there's still some hands that like, are really scary for us. And we still could beat, beat. There's still two pair sets and straights out there, all these people behind us and all that. So I think this is a really volatile land with a really volatile board. And because of that, we have a single pair of hand, even though it's pretty and it's Kings, we need to kinda pot control this and, you know. We don't really wanna get all in here. If we do, we're behind, I guess is what I'm trying to say. King, King, not the nuts on this board. Agreed. Hundred percent agree there, hook. Uh, Homeless says, thanks for the side note with my name, uh. But maybe you check on that, but you got the precusment. Uh, Machine Gun in the house. Lot of players that act behind, agreed, agreed. So I'm just calling. Uh, let's see what happens. Ten points.
So this is one of those spots where all options, uh, kinda stink. Um, I gave fold a score of three, call a score of ten, and raise to twenty-two hundred a score of two. Um, like I said, none of these options are too ideal. Folding, folding pocket Kings after checking the flop is, um, is tough, but it's such a bad board, and there are so many people that went to the flop, and like I said, this, this board hits pretty much everyone's range, so I mean, folding isn't terrible, but I think I do like calling one street and evaluating the river. Um, I don't like raising here. There are too many people behind us still to act. Um, not too worried about, uh, them having, uh, too strong of hands, the, I'm talking about the hijack cutoff and the small blind, because small blind, the small blind checked twice, so small blind probably doesn't have anything. Hijack and cutoff, um, did not elect to bet the flop once checked, once I checked to, uh, once I checked to them, so uh, they probably don't have sets or Queen Jack in their range. Um, so the big blind is, uh, the big blind can represent this, um, all the straights, sets, two pairs and everything, um, but can also have the flush draws and straight draws, so um, I think calling here, proceeding with caution on such a wet board, multi-way, is probably the best option. So, that is what we elect to do. And hijack calls. And the river is a five of diamonds. The big line leads out for twenty-five, uh, twenty-two fifty. So what should we do? Should we fold, call, or raise all in?
Gets a little sticky. Hook says board's wet, can't just flat, flat. It's asking to be outdrawn. Uh, disagree, we could already be outdrawn. Pocket draw, pocket draw. We have a single pair in hand, multi-way on a wet ass board. Pocket draw, pocket draw, pocket draw. Um. On arrival from spectacular fashion, says chat revoked coming in with twenty-two month resub. Sheesh, all the heroes out there. Chat revoked with the twenty-two. Mad Dog with the twenty-eight. Ya'uzza, ya'uzza, ya'uzza. Cyrus is calling. Tough fish is never all in. Mendo's shoving. He was shoving from the flop. He's been all in four times or something. Hook is a small river. Hmm, scary bet. Definitely a scary bet. BBQ calls. Can we fold him here? Holdin' nuts leaking about it. He's got a skirt. Jack Rag folding. Feels like a set to me. I mean, I don't think about a range of hands there, chat revoked. Could be sad, could be two pair- I mean, I don't think about a range of hands there, chat revoked, could be sad, could be two pair, could be queen jack. Could be ace ten. Jack ten, queen ten, certainly could be. Sucks that hijack stuck around, but I'm still calling, cap, that's a good point there, hijack coming around is a little scarier too. The thing about it too is like, I think with the bet and the call, if they had some weird set or the straight. Maybe the set flats, but I think the straight would absolutely raise. We beat ace ten. Queen ten, jack ten. Definitely some bluffs, I don't know how good the Borgata reg is, but I'm assuming they're good, like if this went check, check. All the way around, like I could definitely see going bet bomb as a bluff. Because when everyone checked around, there's no straights out there anymore, right? And that, if the big blind is a really good, really common player, they have all the straights, two pairs and sets in their range. Um, and it's scary as hell, we even got some people folding, right? Top of a range though, yeah. This stuff, more hands have been scared. Rad Dad's folding. Uh, call up the turn, should probably call on the river, that card doesn't change anything, uh, okay, teen lady, we been scared. Uh, we always complain about the most solid players, the highest level, I imagine their bets are all for value, turn raise, he will raise, he can see. And he's not afraid of it, uh, I would say if he's really good, this definitely got bluffs here, if he's got something like. I mean, it's a big blind defend with all those people in there, queen seven suited, something like that. You know, Jack seven's a straight, like, I don't know. Six seven to straight, so those aren't really good candidates. Um, because we all checked around, I would go bet bomb it a lot as a bluff. Um, just because the week, when it checks all the way around and the small blind checks, like I said, they don't ever have the straight out there. Twenty one is a value bet, hoping we'll bomb it off, yeah, so we definitely shouldn't be raising, Ocean's calling. A lot of miss flush draws out there, greed, bust a flush draw for ocean, greed, top price. Talking about the bet, alright, so I figure if he's bluffing, he would shove river, no, um, I don't think he could shove. Again, twice pot. I mean, this is a hand where I'm not happy. I think I'm still calling. Golly, if he's got any flush draws or single pair hands, I feel like we have to call. Um, call so I don't hate myself in the morning, um, but it's definitely not comfortable, I really wonder if Lexi folds here. Um, given that this guy's betting on two players, that's really interesting. Pot and a half, morning show, stand corrected, thank you. If he raises, I think we have to fold. I mean, I, if there's a bet, two thirds pot bet ish and a call and then he comes over the top, we're fucked. We're dead. Folding can be far, yeah, it's really tough, I, I think I'm calling just cuz it's cakes, god damn it, and I, I wanna pot control it and check the flop. But if she folds, I wouldn't be surprised. Let's see what happens, this call behind is also really informative and really scary, which may make her. Be more incentivized to fold, although this could still be draws, right, ten X in the draws, is it called plus EV? I mean, I guess it depends on how we arrange them, right, um. Yeah, alright, let's call and see what happens. People are betting on two people on the river, seems strong, does Rad Dad, super scary. Raise free. He said raise free, he called a raise free, there was a five ways to the flop. Checked around, he believed they bet turn and raise river strong lines, in my opinion, definitely strong. Him overcalling is weaker than strong, agreed, uh, this isn't sort of the problem with checking the flop. Got no idea, nobody really knows the fine range, uh, the problem is like, we got here to pocket draw, right? And I think we're kind of at the top of the. I think we have to call. He's got pocket jacks, but that's an okay hand, I can see that hand too, home, home nuts. Oh my god, I don't know if he's bluffing, six seven in your opinion, huh, nailed him down to the straight, let's find out. Think I'm calling, I mean, think I'm calling, if she falls, I would not be surprised, I would not be surprised, let's find out. She likes to fold.
So I gave fold a score of ten points, call a score of three points and raise all in a score of zero points. Um, it's definitely annoying to have to fold such a premium hand, but. Just con- considering the board texture, how many players went to the flop. Um, this big blind player is leading, he led the turn and the river mul- into multiple people, so. He is representing a pretty strong range here, um, he can have. You know, the two pair combinations, like nine, ten and ten eight, he can have queen jack, six, seven. He can have the sets, um, he can have a set of nines, set of eights, set of tens and set of threes. Um, I mean, you can ask yourself if you think he's gonna re-raise pocket tens from the big blind. Um, I think it's a fine flat, um, multi-way. Um, so yeah, of course he could have some kind of random club combination or just a hand that contains a jack, but. I don't think he's gonna bluff into that many people with. Random clubs or uh, or a jack, um, he might just decide to give up the river. Um, especially being that it is a tournament, um, and he is a competent player. So he cannot, um, he can definitely have a set of threes cuz he did lead the turn. So it's just one of those spots where you just have to throw your hand away and move on and. That's what we did. We folded and the hijack wound up calling, so we got to see the showdown and the big blind wound up having nine, ten of spades. Which I was actually a little surprised about, I didn't, I don't think it's too that great to go for. Uh, value with two pair on this type of board texture, um, with this many players to the hand, I mean. It's close, I guess, uh, maybe he had some kind of reads or the fact that the hijack didn't. Um, end up raising the turn makes him know that he likely doesn't have a straight, um, or set, so. This was a in- interesting hand. Um, so we made a good fold and. Yep, that is it for this hand, I hope you guys learned something and enjoyed it and I look forward to seeing you on the next one, okay, bye.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I can see the fold, um, and I know they had nine, ten in this spot, but I do think they have. Like when it checks around like she said, we realize the hijack probably doesn't have the straight there, right? And uh. I mean, I would go back back with two pair, when it checks around myself for value, um, just because it checked around and that's generally tough weekends, I mean. Absolutely, um. I actually think seven, eight. Probably doesn't go back back now that I think about it, clubs, cuz they're turning their hand into a bluff, I don't know how much they have to. But uh, yeah, alright. Interesting spot, I also think calling the river should probably be a little more points than a three. But I mean, I would say like, maybe a five, so it's not that far off, if I had to grade it myself. Uh, Montra's a BB wood at the flopper hand, yeah, turn river definitely not helped them very much for sure. That is a good point. Alright, let's go back to the quizzes, that was a fun one. That was a fun one. Um, tough spot with kings. Um, I don't know, what is it, any of these look good, cap? I'm gonna come down here and like fill in some of these blanks. That we probably won't get to with uh. My buddy sixes. How about a little mad affleck, let's see how this works. Six hundred win day one, I think I played this.
Alright, this is another hand from the win four hundred dollar tournament, in the same way of King nine of hearts in the big blind. Cut off makes it eleven hundred, small blind flat calls. Should we fold, call, re-raise to forty four hundred, re-raise to six thousand?
King nine suited with a bet and a call. Fifty bags effective, hook is re-raising the six K. Popping it, popping it, popping it, seven thirty one looks fun, alright, we'll look at that one next, cap. Jack rag in for six K as well. Squeeze with her loose razor and pass a caller, Rad Dad in for a squeeze, what side, you going forty four or six K, Rad Dad? Cyrus is calling. Another win four hundred soft tournament, this is a pretty soft tournament. Bull line at six K, a bunch of six Ks, a bunch of calls, chatter book calling, I see you. Gab calling. I feel like, uh. I feel torn, to be honest, Wisco's calling here, time, I. Uh Cyrus, not in position, King nine isn't strong in the hand to re-raise, I'm saying definitely re-raising as a bluff against a loose player and a weak player. Uh, Judd Fish doesn't like to inflate the pot, multi-way out of position, Ginger does, should go in four K. Hold him calling, hold him calling, uh, yeah, so. I would say that in game, I probably err on the side of flattening here. But three betting seems okay, I feel like. Um, four point four, probably not big enough though. Um, cuz we're out of position, there's a bit to call, so my normal bet would be. Thirty seven fifty, four K ish with one person in here. Um, so I'd be going closer to six K if I was gonna three bet this. Wanna see if I before I get more tips, plus we're out of position, small blind be raising with most of his hands, not worried about them, but I don't want to get four bet off that hand either. Yeah, so I know that, um, and I have to kind of defer to my buddy just GTO here, cuz he's the cash game wizard, but. So he's better than me with like two hundred blinds plus for sure, but I know in those spots we're supposed to be three betting hands like this. Um, I think as we get closer to here where we're fifty four effective, I think we can flat now. Um, as the stacks get smaller. So it's really interesting, but I could definitely see the argument for three betting, since it gets a loose razor and a weak player. I think that was a follow, I need stream labs to come up, so I can tell you. AJ Stephens, thank you for the follow, buddy, welcome, uh, so yeah, I, I'm in the air toward calling, there was, I think it was more calls than raises. Uh, but if you re-raised, uh. I think that, I think it's gonna be close. Don't wanna keep the weak player in the hand, um, I think we do, but I think we wanna have initiative more often than not, so that we can do the C betting. Or not, you know, we have all the, the options there and said, when we flat here, we're gonna be like, check calling a lot of boards and. Having less information, right? I would call it if I wasn't for the descriptions of the players, hmm, makes sense, makes sense. I would raise that versus an earlier. Versus an earlier position, but they should be stronger versus an earlier position open, right? Big check raise a lot too, definitely, definitely, they're both weak, can't we outplay them post flop? Agreed, but it's always harder, like out of position, right? Just gotta keep that in mind, we're against weak players, we should be playing tighter correct, cuz if we three bet, they're always coming along. I agree, they're not gonna fold appropriately pre-flop, but. Post flop, they're usually, like, weak players are generally gonna flat a lot and then flat the three bet and then. You know, either, if they have any pieces of the flop whatsoever, they're gonna call a bet and if they don't, they're just gonna fold. Um, so we could three bet to get value now and then they fold a lot on, on flops. The one bad thing is if we start going down the bluffy trail and we get a good bluff card on the turn, we're gonna effectively be all in, the pots could be pretty big, right? Hand just might be the best right now, definitely, definitely could be for that. Yeah, that's why I like to call, I think I'm calling in general too, uh, let's see, but if you raised, I'll be, I'll, I'll. I think man ends to, tends to lean toward nitty a little bit too, um, so, but if he raised, I wouldn't be horribly, horribly surprised. Let's find out, top price says we should isolate, you definitely see the argument, man, definitely see the argument. Hook says six can say they win two K, good investment, I opinion, not giving going to lots to call, from defense, it's a big raise, they need to have the goods, agree. Agree, and you buy a position, oh, look who it is. He couldn't stay away, he's gonna play his first main event seat and, and uh, lurk in the chat. Make it four, four, boy, and they both call, we have pot size bet left, yeah, gets crazy, right? Gets crazy, alright, let's call and find out what happens.
I think we have a few options here, other than fold, we have to play this hand, um, calling I think is the best option. Um, but I think there's some merits of squeezing here, especially if this cutoff is too loose or. More so if this small blind calls to lose, normally this small blind flattening range is gonna be a pretty. Strong, well-defined range of hands, but if this is a weak player, which I have labeled here. That um, flats way too many hands from the small blind, we can kind of punish him and take advantage of that by squeezing a bit more. Um, and this king nine of hearts is kind of right of a, a cusp-y hand that we wanna squeeze or flat. Um, in theory, I think it's a pure flap, but exploitively, if this weak player is just flating too much from the small blind, we can get away with the squeeze as well. Um, I do squeeze to forty four hundred, it's fine, I think flouting is perfectly good too. Cut off fold and this small blind calls, flop comes king ten four with two hearts. This player checks. Should we check, bet three thousand, bet forty five hundred or bet six thousand?
Hmm, so we flop the world effectively, seventeen thousand behind. Hmm, okay, trying to figure out like this, I was doing the math and in my head, trying to figure out what I was gonna do. Uh, what do you guys do, now we got a spot here, we got hearts, we got top burr, we got weak player, forty five hundred for Wisco. Coming out. Ginger has become exploitative, it's the way to be, the way to be, own them pretty, own them post flop, that's where all the money is in this game. Get going six K. Rad Dad six K, Cyrus three K. Marlin building that pot, but you're building the pot with three different sides, what sides, what sides, Marlin? You gotta be more specific than that, never check, agreed. Forty five hundred, we call shove river, shove river, shove turn, clout. Four point five, Mendo's just shoving, uh, pot and almost twice pot. Four point five K for us and I, Judd Fish is six K, D, keep ten X. And draws in, make them pay, six K, bet small, keep them in, three K, don't wanna scare them away, getting mental, waiting down before it gets too screwy. Check or three. Says huh, imposition with such high equity hand, we induce, let him catch second best hand. We do, so you're gonna stay in check, hook. Better of cloud, push a pair, focus a check, unwrap your hand, then size turn, reduce bluff instead of river jams. Bet small three K, possibly induce, we can still get it in while running by the river, three K pot size, but on turn. Four five, three K, actually, it says Mende Bruce, oh, he changed his answer, okay, okay, I like it. You have to bet because you might be behind and you wanna get. Running into the flush hits, I think the odds of us being behind right now are pretty slim, top. On this one. Six K shove turns to jelly, um, so I, I'm a little completely on this one too, I can a hundred percent. Get behind check, um, I think I do that a lot in game myself. Um, because we're not really scared of too many turn cards, queen jack and ace. Kinda suck, but they can't be hearts, right, um, kick the problem a little bit. Definitely, um, which is another thing, um, that I tend to s- check. Spots like this where I have top pair and a little bit on the low kicker side, one for a little bit of balance, two with the hearts, I'm not that scared, um. And I think there's far more good turn cards than bad in a spot like this, um, my other side of the, of the coin. And I think there's far more good turn cards than bad in a spot like this. Um, my other side of the, of the coin. Is that. We could bet three K here and jam turns. I forget who said that. I think that was Moynsho. Yeah, three K for pot size better. That seems like a very viable option for me too. But if I can kill the action, right? Good point, Cap. That's a good point for betting. Stack pot ratio, I might actually go three K. I think that's a better bet. Top shit, shit kicker, we're checking. I can see that option. That's where the, the balance is. But I think kept because of a good point here, like we're ahead here so much. We do have some kicker problems, gonna have some king, queen, king, jack. For sure, or maybe king ten, for sure, for sure, for sure. We do block that a little bit, but for sure, for sure. Possibly check with showdown value. Uh, I mean, he checks the turn on betting. If we check flop and he checks turn, I'm betting for sure there and that's. Forty five hundred, check turns is call, I, I, I think we do it for three, right? If we bet three and he calls three, there's six K more out there, so there's sixteen three hundred out there. And we will have fourteen six in our pot, so we could just do that, right? Are we worried about an ace when we have the flush draw though? I mean, an ace on the turn sucks, right? Queen, jack is very viable hand. What is his range? I think when he flats a raise and it flats a three bad, I think he's got a lot of paint. He's a weak player, right? So I would say mostly that's paint, middling pairs, and then all suited aces. Hmm, if he's a weak player, maybe ace ten off plus, something around that, give or take. Let me know if you can kind of visualize that, if you want me to bring up like a, a hand chart, I can kind of show you. Uh, did he raise? No, we, uh, there was a raise and a key call and then we squeezed. And then once he got squozing, he called the squeeze. Ace hearts is a nice turn, sure. The nuts is always good. No ace king, probably agree with you there. Probably would have three bet that at some point. But it does have ace ten, right? And queen, jack still very much viable. Jack ten, queen, jack, nine, ten, ace, queen, nines, ace, ten, queen, ten. Uh, all hands, I call three K. I agree with, like, everything about that except for maybe the nines. Uh, but everything else, yeah, yeah, I'm with you. Hundred percent. Call that three K, hundred percent, however, I'm with you. Got you crushed. I'm with you. We do block trades. Prepare his in his range today, sir. Again, didn't know such stack depth like three K two. Yeah, I think three K is probably the bet. Is it a rebuy tournament? Uh, it's a re entry. Six hundred dollar with a one, live with the win. Rebuy, table six, top price ready to go broke. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to go broke a lot too. I don't think three, I think three K and jam the turns probably the way. To go here, I think. Although check is a really interesting option, and I think in game I do that a lot. You said an ace, that's where I'm ahead of me with ace hearts, sure. Alright, let's find out. He likes it.
Alright, on the flop here, I mean, our range is gonna hit this. Ace, queen, ace, jacks, king, ten suited, king, jack suited, king, queen suited, pocket tens, plus probably pocket nines, so.
You mentioned pocket nines too.
We don't have a lot of, uh, whiffs on this board per se, or like worse hands are gonna be like our ace, queen, ace, jacks. Uh, which all have a gutter, so I think, uh, stacked to pot ratio just under two, we can just go ahead and bet here a lot. Um, smaller stacked to pot ratio, this is just kind of a protection game here, we just want to bet for protection, so like betting three thousand. Uh, we'll be betting here a very high percentage, so we want to use the smaller sizing. Um, checking is an all right option too, our hand doesn't need many, basically any protection. Having the hearts, there's only three offsuit aces that are bad for us, but I think we just get too much value here betting with our king. So we do bet, player calls, jack of clubs, check, should we check? Bet five thousand or go all in?
We got one of those weird cards. We got one of those weird cards. What do we do now? Check, bet five K or jam that sucker? There's a sucky turn, cloud, definitely is a sucky turn. Definitely. Have we gone check? We would have to likely check back again, I think. Channel book to check it. Tell the fish checking, how about forty percent on the turn? Cap likes to check now, checking is fine, strong, check, 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 check. Block queen nine, ace queen three rep free, very valid points for clout. I'm shoving pretty sure. He's still not skirt. Still jack ten and king, jack out there. And king, queen. Now we're losing jack ten, ace, queen, queen nine, ace, queen, I believe, probably not out there. Very much. Queen, not a great card, very, very true. Chips saved are more valuable than chips lost, check. That's only true. In I C M situations. Moyn still jamming, leaving out for sure, Sosoka, what size, buddy? As night checking, we players on always three by premium hands, true, for the most part. I'll give you that, it's probably mixed frequency. Some people just flat everything. I like most people raise ace, queen, but sure, there are definitely people that have flat everything, sure. Maybe even some more with a bet and then a, well, bet they called and then we three back and they still call. Um, Jay doesn't add two or outs by a big percent, five K for Mendo. All in and rebuy, we players aren't folding the range of this board, check, check. Now we're looking at seventeen outs, they probably flat with a higher frequency, um. Yeah, they probably do. This is an interesting one, um, the hell am I doing? God, that's a bad card. Which is really leading me toward checking. Only because when I jam, I can't figure out what's worse, that's calling? My jamming for value, my jamming for a bluff? I forgot to say they were jamming, I think it was Moyn. You can still have a queen, jack, sure, that's one hand in his range, sure. We have both catcher with really good equity, don't want to not realize, so I check, push my poker, I'm kind of leaning toward that myself, to be honest with you. That's really where my heart is. Really where my heart is. Seventeen outs, minus equities, plus pot of values, I'm going in plus E V spa, top pair two. Got a lot of regrets, yes. He's a weak player, shove and hope you're a weak player, it's correct. Even a weak player is only calling with better for the most part. Queen, jack, and then it's a lot of king, jack, king, queen, king, ten and jack, ten. Although king ten probably raises the flop with the hearts and the straight draws out there. Same hand with backdoor spades. Possible. I think, I think it's gonna be a check. Queen ten out there, indeed. Sure, I'll give you that one too. There's a couple of hands we beat, but those hands that we beat, I'm not sure if they're calling or not when we jam you. Cause we should have two pair or better, a decent amount. Uh, above hand would be, well, ace queens got the nuts, right? Queen and hearts. Thirty four seven river is very strong, in my opinion. Yeah, it is. It is, I just think when we jam here, we only a couple better. So that means we have to check. It's not the worst outcome if we jam any faults. I mean, if we jam any faults, I'd be kind of like, you know. Sure, um, let's check, let's see what happens.
Close spot here on the turn, um. I think I like checking the most. He's never gonna have a worse king in his range. I don't think he, he could have like a king eight seater, a king, a, a king, seven suited, maybe. Um, and. He could have queen, ten suited, and ace, ten suited, that would call a small bet, that's only a few combinations. And, um, he could have some ace, jack, queen, jack, that's gonna call a bet. Um, so I think this is a decent hand to check back in our range, um, and. Basically, never folding the river, that doesn't change anything with our top pair. Um, but I don't like the five thousand bet that much with our range here. I think our range mostly is gonna benefit from shoving or checking and picking hands, um. Into those two buckets, um, instead of splitting with a small bet, so. King nine of hearts, I think fits very nicely into the check back range, and it gives us some flushes. To go on the river that our player will bluff at likely when the flush card comes, so. I like to check four diamonds on the river, player checks. Should we check? Bet five thousand or go all in?
Yes, like, he was saying that ace nine of hearts, they had any bluff on a board like this. In this scenario, if he had ace nine of hearts, we have a missed deal, where you call a four man for sure, some, some shady shit's going on. Cyrus says he checks back, he's waving the white flag. Uh, this is an interesting spot, um. And honestly, this is part in my game, I got, I'm pretty comfortable up to this point, but now, um. I definitely, in my game, I know that I could potentially go for a thin value more often than I do. Uh, J B, good, five K, five K, good value for jack or ten, five K faults, gab, yeah, so. Those of you guys going five K for the value town. Um, that's where I'm conflicted, I can see it. I, I tend to go the hooker route there and check just to be safe. But I can definitely see the five K argument. Five K targeting ace ten, I can definitely see it. Better to be safe than sorry. I tend to go that route as well, hooka. I definitely miss something die bets on the river, which is why I, uh. Which is why, uh. I'm a little conflicted. Ginger shucking, he's a weak player. People love to call it, don't blow up enough to breed. We deck cards, showdown value was red at, I could definitely set an argument. You definitely hear a five K with a potential missed draws out there, agreed, Moyn show. That's why I'm really like. My, my gut is saying bet the five K, but I think I would be checking in game, because I'm a sissy. Miss some of these value spots, but I know I do that. You would have shoved turn, you would have won, now you're beat. He isn't folding and you're behind, why, Tom? What changed on the river? I think we were ahead on the flop, we're still ahead. My mind, value town, in game thirty eight hundred. That seems a little small. I think, I think we can get more value in that model. I think five K is about. Right, like, if you went like, I don't know, six K, I think that's about as high as you could probably go. Still get that value? Cause if we win this fun hand, it's a bonus, no point, I could even play, potentially puts us in a worse spot. Although I don't know that, like, when it goes check. Check turn, if he had the straight or. King, jack, or even king, ten, like, you'd think you would bet. So when he checked, when he flashed this and checks, he either has a queen or some sort of jack X hand. Hmm, I'm really leaning toward that five K, now that I'm talking this out. The jam, look, we could give him somebody missed draws, maybe. The problem with the jam here is like now the jack and the ten probably fold, right, like. If you have queen, jack, it's a pretty tough call. It's a pretty tough call. So I think that might potentially press now. Wait, I want the value, hooka. You gotta be greedy. Uh, check, check is not shot, my opinion, I agree old. Uh, Buckbean, I am not one of the stormers of the home game anymore, you gotta find one of those guys. You're betting back here, why not bet fourteen point six K? Because I think that, like I said, we price out jacks and tens. And that's now five K, we get a crying call from a queen, jack and ace, jack. Maybe even jack, ten. I think we get value at that time. Grace in the pond, walk away. Uh, that's funny. Drinks for girls and drugs and food, hooka. You sound like, we gotta hang out, buddy. Let me know when you're on the side of the pond. I don't think we ever check about your range here. I agree with that, Pro Hammer. Uh, that's why I'm really leaning for five K. Didn't even talk about shoving turn, is that a typical play? Yeah, he did talk about shoving turn. He said the problem with shoving turn is that now we only get called by better king X and then two pairs, right, like. We, there's nothing worse that's calling the shove, for the most part. Caps, I check my hand here too much. I think I definitely do. I think my default here is I just check and take. I'm with, I'm with you on that, Cap, and hooka, I'm with you. Mister, uh, that's, that's, that's off. Don't think we players calling with much worse here. I think we players probably calling with a jack when we check turn. Check, 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 check. I, I would check in game a lot. But I'm really thinking that when he checks river, we get the bet five K. You gotta be kidding. So is this name with check? I agree with you. But I'm, I'm gonna stretch it, I'm gonna stretch it, I'm gonna put the run up to, I'm gonna put the perfect score at risk. I'm gonna challenge myself because I think I check here a lot. And, uh, I think five K might be the right answer, so I'm gonna evolve myself and click five K for my own sake here, but. If you check, I think I would do that a lot in game. Let's find out. Seven points.
Clear value. Through on the turn and check to get onto us on the river. Sizing, we have the small size of five thousand or the all in size, which is about eighty percent pot. Um, I think we just wanted to be doing a lot of shoving here and not really, like. Exploitively, we can definitely have a smut bet five thousand, but, uh, most of our blush here are gonna want to shove. We don't really have any protection issues, obviously. We don't have any because we're on the river. And so I think every king is worth a value bet, and then like ace, jack is definitely worth a all in shove. And that's probably our value threshold, and then we can start shoving with some like. Ace, X, and like, maybe like pocket nines type of hands. Uh, but yeah, I think, uh, we definitely should value bet here. I think I like shove the best, but the bet, the five thousand is fine too, as an exploitable bet. I went with the five thousand, I don't think I like it, I think I should be shoving, but player calls and we win the pot.
Again, I struggle to find what's worse. That's calling the jam. That's funny. Hold on, wanted to post a link about how he thought about this hand. I thought it was some like sort of strategic thing, but there you go, there's, that's. That's for hold on, that's funny. I mean, I, I think five K is a good value bet. I do think we have less bluffs, I just think weak players are just not gonna be able to fold a jack. But I think if we shove, I think they fold a jack. This is why I'm watching the stream. Glad to have you, buddy, glad to have you. We do this every Saturday, guys. Those of you are new, we do this every Saturday using the pro coaching dot com content. And now you're gonna make me go through my spiel. Here's the next mission one P C in the chat, if you are interested, um, I create quizzes on this site. My boy Crazy Six is creating quizzes on the site, Mad Affleck, Jonathan Little, Sassy Nato, Ace of Vado, Lexi Gavin. Um, Evan Jarvis, all create content for this site. Um, you can click that link in the chat for the P C, there is a free option where you get twenty. Um, free quizzes like this, plus some charts for a hundred blinds or more and some homeworks. If you sign up for the premium, I believe there's a. Premium that's forty dollars a month, um, where you get a ton, it's like over six hundred quizzes and tons of homeworks and webinars. A gajillion pieces of content, and then there's a platinum version too, which I believe is like a hundred bucks a month, and they have deals for buying annually. But there's at least a free option where you can get free content, so sign up for that, no matter what. I mean, got nothing to lose there. There's a link in the chat, we do this every Saturday. Usually it's me and my partner Crazy Six is going back and forth. Uh, today he's playing for a main event seat, he's playing a satellite for a main event seat, so I'm running it solo, but make sure you check that. uh today he's playing for a main event seat he's playing a satellite for a main event seat so I'm running it solo but make sure you check that and on my YouTube channel let me throw that out um I record these always so you can go to the YouTube channel you can catch up on um any study stream you've missed from now to the first one that we've done and uh if you missed the beginning of this one you wanna go back and check them go ahead and do that if you have any questions comments concerns didn't like something we said love something we said found something missed something post comments in the chat let me know I will get back to it if you have a comment for crazy sixes post comment in the chat I will make sure that he gets it I talk to him every single day and that's it so there's the spiel check that out she looks fluffy I mean I guess but to be called by what I mean shit I'm falling Ace Jack poor harbor I'm definitely definitely and I I I don't disagree that it looks more of a bluff than five K I I I agree with you a hundred percent but um I think even the weak players are like oh shit like it was bored and Ace Jack goes I think fighting so much better today I think I figured it out it's because when I do this with sixes we have a Skype call and the Skype call is using my desktop audio you know and the quizzes are using my desktop audio so they share it and it gets like merged volume and so we'll have to figure that out we'll definitely have to figure that out because uh we know what the problem is now right uh having time here we don't need a bluff we have showdown value I don't think it was a bluff I think it was a value like I said five K against a weak player specifically is gonna overcall with Jack with a jack poor harbor brings up a great point if you are a a good player like like they obviously are then they're like wait this might be value and gets away from the jack but knowing that there's a weak player I think we can we can target them for sure ah let's go back to the lobby we got time for a few more uh cat wanted to do seven thirty one let's throw that one out there thirty three dollar online tournament uh oh it's a Sassy Nato so a couple of things one prepared to get your brains melted cuz Assassin does things differently the most Johnny thank you for those bits and uh Whisco you gave me bits earlier I think I missed them while we were loading up thank you for those buddy that just reminded me um and two this is gonna be the real test for volume because Sassy Nato's videos are super low in general if we can hear this but it's a no brainer even though I do think the Skype and the browser are competing so there we go alright let's kick this off we got King Jack suited and it looks like a shitload of action and the thirty three dollar tournament that's probably something I'm playing and uh let's play the video and see what happens
everybody in this hand we are in a thirty three dollar online tournament with King ten of spades on the button uh we're playing against a lot of online regs we have about ten thousand in chips at fifty one hundred uh pre flop here would you like to fold call raise to fifteen hundred or raise to twenty five hundred
let's all go to the lobby and hammer cell street I don't know what's assassin goes black let's back this up a hair alright there's the action there's the action two point five K all day motherfucking I can hear him very well we figured it out so I guess next time we'll try like six and I might do some sort of testing where uh maybe we'll try Discord call instead of Skype and if that doesn't work then I don't know we might have to figure out some other option maybe I have his stream up with the volume on I don't know we'll figure that out uh Johnny calling uh left behind I'm sure Alex is raises could be I mean I don't I don't know what goes on here he could click this back we're going out we're going out we're going out of the box here going it's like I always said like there's certain people I think Sassy Nato is one of those I think Ryan Plant is one of those world-class players amazing players but like I feel like you have people you can kind of teach people to like paint a landscape is the analogy I always use which is really hard to teach someone to be a Picasso and I think Assassin out of I think those guys are are real picassos yeah really outside the box and doing things differently the most and and world class uh take place calling Mendo Bruce calling pot is already eleven fifty call work to steal says hookah twenty five hundred tried to get one on one he does not like to play multi-way um two point five K for Cyrus just needs to turn his mic way down um the problem is is that it's the same volume Mendo um the quizzes and his mic are the same volume so I can't turn down one and not the other that's the way it works with the with the streaming software we'll figure it out uh my call but Alex probably weighs is Mendo where's the all in option uh oh just stuffing it he's not scared he's not scared ginger raising looked at twenty five hundred in this game probably still gets two or three calls composition I guess this cap yeah I I think I'm calling too um if this was like you know like a bet and a call and you wanted to squeeze there I think that's cool um but when there's this many betting callers like we're just gonna blow the shizzle out of this pot and then we don't even know if we hit a king if we're good so I think calling is probably the right option King says that it does do well once you wait for sure for sure since that's turned his mic down source that could be it that could definitely be it we'll figure it out composition in my opinion says homies nuts
so we have multiple options here I think your best one is going to be call because suited semi-connected hands make straights and flushes and those it's okay to play a multi-way pot with this hand King ten off suit should go to the muck if you had a hand like Ace Queen off suit that would be much more of a hand you would like to squeeze with because those hands do really well heads up uh not so much in multi-way pots just making one pair type hands that tends to not be the best hand when pots get big multi-way if you said raised to twenty five hundred I really admire the gumption uh set fifteen hundred I don't think you're thinning the field at all but twenty five hundred uh I admire the gumption the only problem is in online tournaments because people can multitable if they don't open as much as you like them to live people just get so bored they open everything and that really helps you when you're squeezing because you get so many folds uh I think we do have to go with the call here so we do call and it we're having a big old party here and the board comes semi-good for us and it gets checked around now here would you like to check would you like to bet seven hundred would you like to bet a thousand or would you like to bet thirteen hundred
this is the sound of the plot thickening uh if we call we could get squozen uh thing here is like I said before like when there's this many callers for them to squeeze us um that's an expensive squeeze so I think it's a little less likely we get more and more more and more flats there and get squo's less often uh family photo yeah Jack I've been thirteen hundred he couldn't wait he's out there he's bottom he's bottom what's the bottom seventeen hundred he's been bad one K for homies nuts one K for Tika 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 check it's cap whoa controversy controversy uh thirteen hundred I think that is what Mendo Bruce meant cuz you don't have thirteen K seven hundred things out the field ooh that's small for Cyrus cuz I don't know this ugly check calling probably uh we're in position so checking and then evaluating turn cuz we're on the button six present thanks so much for calling that's okay this hand flops well checking marginal hand multi weights is rad dad uh thirteen hundred makes a flush chaser pay cuz everyone chases flushes on thirty three dollar tournament fair that is definitely true trying to vote checking one point three K for Marlin seven hundred in the field one K for oceans what's up Cyrus good to see you buddy I'm a bad with the vector flush draw interesting seven hundred thirty in the field then we raised two point five K pre now we're in position quite comfy calling now except we'd still be four ways and pot will be bloated hookah because with one two three four five six you're not getting everyone a fold just think it'll happen um checks the JB good check for Whisco check for Chuck's bell line other Cyrus other Cyrus I'm sorry Cyrus the virus cuz I can't just call him one three seven four seven 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 I got time for that shit rumor says yeah of course it's zoom and I'll sort three comes on the turn and someone bets pot what do you do uh I think we have to call um conversely when you bet here and someone check raises you what do you do on a board that's super draw heavy and again we have kicker problems so I think I am leaning toward check myself uh cuz we bet here I don't think we thin the field very much I think we thin the field a little bit um and we do block top ten a little bit which is good uh back there flush draw is interesting would you bet that um I probably still check but if you bet then cap I I I like that I do like that so much um I think seven hundred probably doesn't thin the field if you're gonna be one of the betting people I think we have to go I mean let me get a calculator real quick so if we bet a thousand wanna buy the seventeen fifty in the pot that is roughly fifty seven ish percent of pot so close to sixty or thirteen would just two thirds so I would say a thousand probably tends to feel better um I think seven hundred probably doesn't thirteen hundred tax those draws I can kinda see that a little bit too on a wet board multi-way um jellyfish why do we need the uh wait why we need the back to flush draw I think he's saying to go with the back or straight draw the back for fuck's sake what's up buddy love the screen babe actually that's awesome I can get behind it alright so I I think I'm checking uh one bit here the bigger sides in the field I I think I'm checking um cuz the kicker problem situation and super multi-way um but if I did bet it's in the field I can definitely see some of that argument I think we gotta be big think thousands okay thirteen thirteen hundreds okay I think a thousand probably works thirteen hundred while your head says Mendo interesting Mendo if you had King eight here would you still bet for fucks like says without the back of the flesh sixty eight ways definitely check that's how I feel uh I love that that's funny as hell alright let's check it's gonna happen
we most likely do have the best hand right now so we would like to charge people pretty much the maximum they're willing to pay it's really likely someone with an Ace King would have either three bet or had led on this board the only hand we're really worried about is King Jack that would make sense for someone to be checking with the intention to call uh but Jack ten will call us here diamond draws will call us here maybe even some queens uh if the big blind called with uh King King eight suited King seven suited uh things of that nature I think we're gonna get called and a lot of people won't even fold their queen to one bet so we should go ahead and fire here I think a thousand's the most that people won't even think about uh seven hundred it works just about the same and I don't think you're getting as much value thirteen hundred I think makes people pause uh which we don't wanna do when we're thinly value betting uh so we bet and we get two callers and the turn is the two of diamonds and the big blind checks and under the gun plus one checks now here would you like to check would you like to bet fifteen hundred would you like to bet two thousand or would you like to bet twenty five hundred
uh fuck sex is QX ever calling this is the cutoff retire turn you slept back behind I agree um whoever this is Assassin out of and he is going to melt your brain man he's gonna take us to an uncomfortable position cuz that's what he do that's what he do but I do kinda agree um and I do like if you're going to bet the one K size obviously like I was saying is probably the best size um now we're in a mess we got caught twice which we kinda knew was gonna happen that's what I said was gonna happen pre play a lot of these thirty three dollar tournaments and to be fair I wonder how many three thirty three let's try that again how many thirty three dollar tournaments assassin out of his playing nowadays given the size of his bankroll um two K not skirts is jellyfish Sarah says he skirted so I was gonna hide behind him the back to the flush job look pretty good right now sure does sure does agree uh yeah I I actually think that's a terrible card take a bet fifteen hundred I think it's terrible card especially with two callers I think there's good amount of diamonds out there um I I think we we probably should be checking at this point because if we bet here now we're turning our hand we're trying to top pair no bluff that's like never really a good idea text sort of stream in snap check turn snap bold river kind of agreeing with you fuck's sake I kinda feel like for fuck's sake two diamonds got here we should have checked flop alright let's find out likes to check alright we're back on track we're back on
if we bet again we always have to ask ourselves okay are we betting for value or as a bluff clearly we have top pair so this is for value so if we're betting for value what do we think is calling us well this one's a little weird with the third diamond on the turn uh do we really think a queen is calling again hmm see it seems a little dubious um I don't know if I like it i- is even a Jack ten calling us again so I think we gotta check here and we check and the river is the two of spades big blind leads for two K and under the gun plus one calls now here would you like to fold call raise to four thousand or raise all in
great googly moogly we get a lead in the call yeah I'll lose this missed drive by three rounds running up to the two the fight hard in the venom steps uh we have to induce some check and we have a clear fold if the diamond peels off which that didn't happen but it did get weird right have bluff catcher now agree bro check here jam river if not an ace or a diamond jam river Mendo to get called by what that's worse you're jamming for value right Mendo so Assassin always brought that up right whenever you're gonna bet or check when it comes down to that there's two basic questions we gotta boil that down to are we betting as a bluff or are we betting for value right Mendo so when we jam river when they check we're betting for value right because we have top pair so for betting for value what's a worse hand that's gonna call your King ten shove on the river and conversely if you're turning your hand into a bluff and we're jamming the river as a bluff Mendo then what's better that's folding cuz that's the opposite question right Jack ten diamonds calls here again indeed uh probably should just re-raise all in and retire for poker caps folding raise all in and rebuy says cold-hearted fold flush got there shut full 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 with a bet and a call I think we are beat says rad dad Cyrus folding you shove river is clearly a bluff blocking top set pulling out flushes but he has an ace here don't full flushes this is just uh I think we got the right price it's just a car in the rear but I don't like it priced in he can get his monitor kicker out of position into players folds is hookah clearly a fault fault and alrighty Tika finally comes along they're folding two I'm folding yeah I mean with the better call I imagine someone's got a king at the worst right and like I'm either beat or split with all kicks um and with a bet and a call I'm I'm just folding I'm I'm just folding uh ocean Johnny couldn't fold the top pair I I think I'm folding let's see what Assassin out of this
oh oh what you are looking at right here is where most people piss away their chips this is one of the spots you guys gotta be really careful on now I'll tell you why everybody pisses away their money here cuz one time every couple of months you fold here and the first guy's got Ace Queen and the second guy's got King A right and you just feel like oh my god oh my god look at that big pot I just lost but what happens ninety percent of the time you call here you call you see a flush you mock you call you see You call, you see. A weirdly played King Queen, you mock. We all know this, everybody watching this knows this. They've played enough poker, they know that. But what people don't get is if you call here and you're wrong, that is twenty big blinds. If you three bet and C bet and bluff and set that up. Awesome. You've made three big blinds, four. You're gonna have to three bet, C bet bluff five, four times before you make up what you just gave away. With this river call, you guys gotta be really careful on this. These are also online regs, so you're not as likely to see just like random, uh. Uh, just random crap, C bet, random crap call. If this were live, okay, you gotta take your time. Cuz sometimes you'll see guys playing their own little patty cake game, which is really confusing where someone want tens here and somebody else who have Queen Jack. But online, uh, versus a bunch of regs, it's okay to just let it go.
Yeah, I agree. Um, says all because we flat free, I disagree. I think if we ISOed pre, we still got four callers, we still got the wet board, we took a promise, it's still played exactly the same way. Um, so I wouldn't figure that one. Snow in New York, huh? It's cold here, but it's, I mean. It's cold for Vegas, right? So it's like forty five or something, it's cold. Alright, what time is it? We got time, we got time? We got time, that was a good one. Good pick by Cap. Ooh, you wanna do a, you know what, I'm gonna leave this WSOP sixes hand, one of my buddy's sixes. I'd say we could do a tribute one, but uh. We'll save that for him. What about Jonathan Little? We haven't seen him today. Uh, Jellyfish guy got up on table last night, nice buddy. I did pretty well too. I got a first and a second last night myself. Gonna turn down the aggression, I guess. Yeah, I guess it's just not seeing, Mendo, I think the idea is recognize, the thing I noticed. About you from this side of the screen is that like, you see top pair and you're just bet shot, bet shot, bet shot, bet shot, bet shot. But I think a part of it's recognizing that when our top pair, or even in that situation where we had Kings and a couple quizzes back. How those are, even though they're, they look strong, they're more marginal type situations. Are there any short stack ones, Mendo? There definitely don't seem to be very many. Let me back up. Everything in here is usually like super, super deep. Oh yeah, look, if I, if I sort by stack size. You kinda see like. This doesn't say how many blinds, but it's a lot. This is a gajillion blinds, gajillion blinds. This is a little short, but we took that one. Oh, I guess there's some. Yeah, there's some short stack ones. You wanna take a short stack one? Let's do it. Let's do it. Seven twenty-three everyone say. Alright, so let's do a, uh. Thanks for hanging out, buddy. Too hungover for this right now. I appreciate you stopping by, man. Um, let's do one of these short stack ones, cuz we get asked that a lot. And then after that, we'll jump into seven twenty-three, let me write it down. Seven twenty-three, okay. Uh, I don't wanna go too, too short. Let's do some like rejammy type stuff. How about this one? Ooh, you can tell this is old. He's using share my pair, he's not even using the easy replay that they always use. I'll just check this one out.
Here we have Ace Jack offsuit in the hijack seat playing about eighteen big blinds deep. Folds around to me, should I fold? Call, raise to nine hundred or raise to fourteen hundred?
Hmm, this is a little bit weird too, cuz we don't see what the other stacks are, and I think that kinda matters. Kinda matters, um. Six sixty-five, seven twenty-three, oh, he's got a bunch of them, alright. Keep those in line, Cap. We'll see how many we can get to. Um, Cyrus score nine hundred here. This is interesting. I wish I could see what everyone's stack sizes were, that would change my answer. Um, nine hundred surprise, eight hundred isn't an option. Agreed on that one a hundred percent there, Rad Dad. Nine hundred's going in everywhere. No limbs. No limp. So this is interesting for me. I agree, I'm surprised there's no min raise. Generally, when you're shorter, you wanna start min raising. And when you're deeper, if you go two point five or three X, you're cool. Um, but. And I could see limping here too, um, as an option. Especially if some of these were like squeezy jammy stacks, but we don't have that information. Alright. Everybody out there going nine hundred. Um, I guess without that information, I'd go nine hundred too. I see Lag guys nineteen K, but we don't see these other stack sizes. Cuz like if these guys had like five K, six K, four K, I could see limping, um. To potentially, uh. Get someone who might come over the top, right? Remember this cat, didn't she drive me nuts? Look, get it? Care to get your learn on? What is this quiz from two thousand and four? It was quiz number two eighty-eight, so yeah, it's like halfway, um. The second quiz, I don't know. Alright, let's go nine hundred and see what happens. Lexi.
I suppose I also could have given you the option to just open shove all in. Um, and let's talk about that briefly. Whenever you're in this scenario and the players yet to act are all really, really good. Like best in the world players, then going all in probably makes sense because the other plays. Are going to lead to a situation where either your opponents are gonna play game theory optimal, or they're going to adjust to take advantage of whatever they. Are fairly confident you're going to do wrong, which you presumably don't know. So. That's the spot where you may just want to take the slightly plus EV play of going all in. That said, against normal players. Especially players who you have a read against, I definitely like raising to nine hundred or even eight hundred. And then going from there. In today's game though, I definitely like slightly more than a min raise, because I think a lot of people just. Almost blindly call a min raise and blindly calling a min raise from the big blind is not such a bad strategy if you're gonna play. Somewhat reasonably after the flop, so I'm gonna raise to nine hundred pretty much every time. As you make it bigger. You make it easier for your opponents to play because they know you're probably not folding to a shove, in which case, if they do shove. Well, now you're in this really nasty spot where you're pretty much pot committed to call, but often you're gonna be in bad shape. So only a loose aggressive guy on the button calls and flop comes nine, six, two. Should I check? Bet one thousand, bet twenty-two hundred, or bet thirty-six hundred?
Or give us stack sizes, John, seriously. Way to go, JL. I'm gonna yell at him when I talk to him next. What's up with, with two eighty-eight, John? Tika's like, eh, this is, this awkward, sucks to get flatted sometimes. Getting flatted is always, is sometimes. The worst thing ever, right? Like, a lot of times, actually, I would say. It's worse than. It's worse than, uh, getting raised for sure. Check call against the lag question mark, check to induce the jam, then snap. One K for Johnny, two point two for Marlon. Lag is deep indeed. Lag did have the stack size to flatten us a lot, make things uncomfortable. Hey, hope you're good to see you, buddy. Thanks for stopping by again. I'll see you next week. I appreciate you, bud. Have a good one, man. We'll check jam potentially, hmm. Check flop, we have the bet it thinks is cap. Tika's decided to check out of position, Cyrus checking, cats says one K. Hmm, now the cat wants out. While we're thinking about it. We'll let the cat out. Uh, got a C bet rights as Mendo, checks his bobon, probably check, I really don't know to be honest. I think I bet the one K. I mean, this is like the driest board in America. Probably gonna bet once and give up, but I guess, hmm. Two K, I only leave myself ten bigs behind. It's like no hand, no draw. So I think like two point two and three sixes, three point six is out for sure. So if we get one K, Cyrus fire say one K as well. Or checking, two and two looks like we have overpair and we turn jam, we go check, check. The problem is, yeah, I mean, you're just, you're just betting blindly, right? They have a nine, they're never folding, seven, eight never folding. Tens never folding, lag guy probably raises above that. Pocket eights, hard to fold if it's a blank turn? Hate betting giving up with a short stack. I mean, I think that's okay. I think when we bet with a short stack, we look stronger though, right? Opponent has nineteen K, I know. I know, but I, I, I mean, if we check here. Are we then, and they check behind, are we then leading turn? What's the plan for feature streets, Tika? I guess that's what I'm asking, right? Cuz if we check here and they check behind and then we just leave blank. Turns, are we checking again, then just check folding and giving up the ace jack? Um, is that plan? Or if you bet the one K here. Again, what's the plan for blank turns? Um, hmm. Just checking, checking him out. Don't mind delayed C bets to Cyrus, okay? Just planted for straight value when you're this shallow, keep your sixteen bigs. Slap and go, then we're just like, kinda blindly getting it in, right? I just never do that. At least high. Can't check here, we opened the door for him to get us off a good hand, that has some value. Well, that's what Tika's saying. Tika's saying they're just gonna check him up because we're short. You have sixteen bigs behind, it's fifteen and a half or so. Does make it awkward, super awkward. Super, super awkward. I would decide, I wouldn't be surprised if Jonathan checks. I find myself betting one K here a lot and giving up a lot. Um, cuz the board's so dry. But if you just check give up, gave up, I, I, I kinda see some of the, um, some of the argument for that as well. Text up or turn against the lag. Uh, we have all the repairs, dry flop, they have to fold unless they get a nine or have a middling pair. Or something like seven, eight suited. Some sort of suited paint in hearts, spades and clubs that can like overs and backdoors. That can then float us. I think those are there too, Cap, right? I think. I wouldn't be surprised if check is the right answer. I find myself betting one K. Did you say lag was a pro? I don't remember. Did they say that? Anybody remember? Go find a nice simple game of checkers. Fair. Fair. This game hurts my brain, man. I didn't get in this shit for the thinking, I got in for the money. Uh, but he comes over the top then snapful. Snapful, set the felt on fires, nah. I'm sorry. I didn't mean it. I take it back, I was just playing. I apologize profusely. Go on my merry way. And then you have the best hand here, close to sixty-seven percent of the time, so we bet thirty-six hundred. I mean, you're just betting more than half your stack would do that, Cap. And like, that's never the answer. Check jam, I think is better than thirty-six hundred or twenty-two hundred, in my opinion. Check jam makes a little more sense because we checked, get him to bet in the backseat cuz he's laggy and then we jam because we likely have the best hand here. I don't take that line personally, I just. Tend to. Not put my tournament in risk with ace high there a lot. You know, put the all in there a lot. Uh, but I could definitely see that, that argument where they're gonna bet into us because they're laggy and we're. They're gonna put pressure on us and we can jam because they shouldn't hit this board too often. I can see that on. No, conversely, like we C bet this one, lag guy could think, you know, we never hit this board and put us to the test. However, I don't think they put us to test in the air very often, one. And two, like us betting again on the short stack looks strong. I'm gonna bet one K, if he checks and check, well, this can be interesting, let's find out what happens. He likes to bet one K.
This is a somewhat dry flop, obviously ten nine is top pair, nine eight's top pair, nine seven's top pair, et cetera. And we are against a loose aggressive guy who could be playing all those hands, but he could also be playing plenty of hands like. Ace ten and King Queen and pocket threes that decides to fold to a bet. So I'm all for betting in this spot. If you think your opponent's like literally never, ever folding, it may make sense to check. Or if you think your opponent is really ridiculous and you can check looking to check call somewhat confidently. Then I think that play may also have merit, but this is a spot where I'm going to bet a thousand with my whole range. And when I do have the overpairs, I'm just getting paid for all my money most of the time. And when I don't, well, maybe we'll get there.
Maybe we'll get there. So, maybe we'll get there.
A thousand, an opponent now raises to thirty-two hundred. Should we fold, call, or go all in?
A little bit tough, right? Cuz it's gonna be laggy. A little bit tough. We YOLOing it, we giving up, Cyrus says fold. Johnny's folding. What do you guys think? Mendo's back to shoving. Maybe we'll get there. It's my favorite hand, Tika, it's my favorite hand, man. Uh, what if we change gears here? What about check raise? Is that, like, yeah, we were talking about that, uh. That seems like an okay option-ish, uh, because they're gonna see that a lot being laggy and then shouldn't hit this. Um, kinda see that line. This board's so dry though, I just tend to see that these ones, kinda like John. Fold away, maybe we will get there. No, 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 still fold, still fold. Looking for my car keys on the way to the parking lot, whoa. You got to be kidding, he's not scared at all. Can't call, gonna fold that equity with the shove, bet small, so I could fold. Speech and then fold, pop, pop, pop. If this was a, uh. Maybe big bet's better, the problem holding is nuts is that the big bet committed us. And you know, and then, and, and it also was like a weird thing, like every big bet was at least a third in maybe, or. A third to sixty percent of our staff. So the size, kinda like what Mendo picked a good one here, because the size. Really limited our, our being able to, um, bet big. Think fold here is probably, I think I'm good with the jam here. Here's why. He knows he doesn't hit us, so he's applying pressure. Jammer by double six. Thing is that we still have all the overpairs. At all range. Maybe a big maybe. Big maybe. Uh, I think I'm folding here. I'm not really gonna put it in with ace high. Got you, big maybe, not big bet. Got you, I misread that, I apologize. Yeah, I think I'm folding. No fold equity, who said that? Someone said no fold equity and, uh. There it is, Rad Dad said it, he was on point. Can't call and no fold equity with a shove. Fold and ask for drinks. Yeah, I think so. Let's find out. Oh.
This is certainly not what you want to have happen when you bet a thousand in the spot and the easy play is clearly just to fold. There are some times where you have some sort of a read that this player is absolutely ridiculous. And he's just getting after it every single time he has any sort of equity whatsoever. And if you're against one of those types of players. I actually think all in is the right play because then. You're gonna give your opponent three to one pot odds if you shove, right? He has to put in another three thousand, actually, he's getting better than that. He has to put in three to win a pot that's going to be fifteen. So he's getting four to one. So if he's ever folds getting four to one pot odds, that's clearly a great success cuz we have ace high. And if he calls off with stuff like ten eight or even Jack ten or Queen ten or something like that, that's also fine. This is really just a question of how ridiculous is. This is really just a question of how ridiculous is the opponent? Um, I've played in many, many games where I would, I would consider being all in with the ace jack, but it really does take someone special. In general though, in this spot, yes, you're getting bluff sometimes, but. The people, the hands that are bluffing you are often hands that have some equity like eight, seven or ten, eight. And maybe even the opponent's just straight up value raising with pocket sevens or something like that, which is always a disaster if you get it in there. So. I think this is a pretty easy fold, but from time to time I may find myself all in. Which I did this time, opponent calls. Hopefully we're ahead. He has jack three, wow. Was expecting to see jack three of spades, I was expecting to see something like ten, eight. Anyway, jack three of spades, he decided to stick it to me and. He got the three on the turn, so. Out I go.
This one had jack three of spades and still you got called off. So that was kind of the point about no fold equity. For me, I tend to put more value on my tournament life and I. For, I, I was the guy who said I saw lag and, uh. That's why I was going with it. Um, the thing there is that like, I know that laggy guy is gonna do something like those jack three, I'm gonna get him eventually on a board that's easier to. We're gonna get him, it's easier to play, so for me, I tend to stick more value on my tournament life in some spots like this and then. You know, I'll get him later. He's gonna spads off to me eventually. You know, in a spot where I'm more comfortable than. A berry's high. Uh, but yeah. That's the guys I play as. Well, five fifty live tournament is probably the equivalent to a, you know, ten dollar online tournament. If you wanna do like. Overall skill level. Jales how not to play ace jack series, uh-oh. Tika didn't like it. Where is I? Alright, uh, what time is it? Alright, we got time for more, seven twenty-three was the one you guys were asking for. Let me get it situated. Seven twenty-three, seven seventeen, oh, you just got a. Seven seventeen, we already did. Cap's got a, got a hard on for Assassin's Honor today. Alright, so. Let's do seven twenty-three, huh? Well. House with the lion, what's up buddy? Good to see you. Flexing the lion emo. Probably used to have five fifties, oh nice, that could definitely be it. Alright, let's play.
Hey guys, so in this hand, you're in a three thousand five hundred dollar WPT in Atlantic City. Uh, you have six four suited, I just realized I didn't write down the city, so I did not. Uh, we have six four suited in the big blind, uh. The villain is on the button and has raised a three X. Uh, the villain is a good younger reg, he seems to be. Unlike many. Uh, he's seems to be comfortable with himself and he seems to be pretty polite. Uh, we have about thirty-six big blinds here effectively at five hundred, one thousand with a one hundred Annie. Here pre-flop, would you like to fold? Call? Raise to seventy-five hundred or raise to nine thousand?
So I was typing to, uh, Mendo there. It's about doing it over and over and over again, finding study groups, getting involved over and over and over again. Another good thing, Mendo, if you feel like. You get like, you're drinking from a fire hose, right? You're trying to think of all these different things I wanna kinda tweak. And twist in my game, uh, what I always tell people is just. You know, take it slow, make a list, make a list of four or five things that you really wanna work on. Like tempering down the aggression with top pair shitty kicker. There's one for you, you know, and like make a little list, whatever works for you. Keep that list next to your mouse or your keyboard when you're playing. And that way, every time you go to do an action, it kinda smacks you in the face, focus on those three, four, or five things and then. Um, once you kinda nail those down, you feel real comfortable, you feel like you've kinda plugged that leak or. Got a good hand on it, you can cross things off and add another thing on the list, you know, and do it that way, that's kinda, kinda how I tell them. The fact that you show up every week to this thing, this is what. Six, eight, ten weeks in a row since you found us, um, definitely. Alright, um, triple three X raised, geez, yeah, that is a little awkward for sure. Uh, fold a raise, ten to folds is kept. Thirty-five bigs deep. On a button, of course, uh, fold here, four is a min raise, I call, three, or three X. Puts us in awkward spot for a stack. July's folding. Call to protect his blind, thirty blocks folding, S nine says toe, I wonder why you picked that as an example? Which example? I've just been talking. Let me know which one. Anyways, uh, yeah, so I agree, three X is a little weird here. Min raise, snap, and this one. Less, I would say the three X, but Sasa now is gonna call it for sure, flops pretty well. Um, flat looking and check raise the flop, so he's bad, yes. Um, I think if we're deeper, we can three bet. Um, now that we are shorter, we should be flattening. When we play these stuff, this, this stuff. Bruce had this exact situation, he's got his notebook ready. Typically one to four, four, five X out of position too, and that is an option, I think he's folding. Bruce called in the spot, defended. Nice, I think he's gonna defend, Cap. I would fold more off into a three X. And then literally flat everything under a three X. Toe, the bet, 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 what top issue to kicker? There you go. I'm with you, I'm with you both, I'm with you. I'm with you. Alright, let's call and find out.
I think typically when you're three betting pre-flop as a bluff right now from the big blind, what you're mostly trying to set up is. Bluffs on the flop and I think that's gonna be very difficult to do from this stack size, so. Uh, well, generally raising here would not be a bad idea if you thought the person was going to fold their high cards on the flop. I. I, I think it might be a little troublesome here. If you just wanted to fold, cause you have six four high out of position versus a good player, I think that's totally fine. I, I think the play we can make work. The most if we have some post flop chops is call from the big blind, uh. If we don't feel really confident with our check raising strategy or with our post flop strategy, I think we should just fold. Uh, so we call. And we do hit a pair. And on the king of hearts, six of hearts to a clubs board, would you like to check? Would you like to bet twenty-five hundred? Would you like to bet five thousand or would you like to bet eight thousand five hundred?
Are we checking to the aggressor or are we getting a little cray cray and lead now? What do you think? What do you think? What do you think? Cyrus is checking with a quickness. Uh, Cap, that's funny thing about that hand is that I would like to defend even up to like two point seven. Or so with six four suited. And so like this is just so close to that. The checks are streaming in the chat. My case, I had two of my suit on the flop. Called a bet and folded to a large bet on the opposite turn. Um, I think that is the correct play, Mendo, assuming you had a bunch of chips. You were in the twenty-five blinds or so. And you're probably best to. Um, with your draw, check raise flop and then jam turn. But if you were deep, then I liked the way you played it for sure. Uh, twenty-five hundred to Tika. Leading into them, interesting. Check call, BBQ leading into him, little dog leads coming out. Don't have post flop chops that are. Betting that flop, so checking. Anybody else out there got an idea? Check for ocean, there it is. JB, good checking. Yeah, I, I think I'm checking too. Um, for a couple of reasons, one, I don't really wanna lead here and get raised, I guess if I lead here and get raised, I just fold. That's at the end of the world, but when I lead here and get called, I don't know if they have a king, a heart draw, I don't know if they're good. What's the plan for the turns? All turns? Gonna be kinda bad to us? Push presses, lead small and fold or raise, shut down on a group turns, so they got a dog lead in their game too. I don't have that many dog leads in my game and certainly not when I have showdown value type of stuff, I tend to not as much. You know, if I had like. Some bullshit on the six, three, two, and you don't let, I know those are the boards I like to do that kinda thing with. Um, because it hits our range more and hits them just in general less. Um, I think we're supposed to check here. I think we're supposed to check here, we showed up by you. And then figure out. What to do to that. Seen a lot of block with dog leads lately, it's because Upswing put out an article a while back and everyone starts talking like crazy. That's the honest truth. Most people doing it incorrectly. This is a weird one, I tend to not dog lead in general, but certainly not when I have a pair. I think checking is probably the right answer, let's find out.
This player is really likely to have opened with a wide array of hands on the button and be seat betting pretty much all of them. So you're ahead of his range, I think you can check call. Here, uh, if you said that two thousand five hundred, unfortunately, I think that looks exactly like what you have, which is. Some piece of the flop that would like this to be a very small pot, so please slow down, please, so. He's really likely to pick up on that, so let's not do that. Betting five thousand is interesting, it turns it into a bit of a bluff. Uh, although I think if he calls, it's going to be extremely confusing how to play. The, the thing about betting pairs out of position is if you check on Turner River at any point. I, unless you're gonna go for three barrels, at some point you're gonna tell this person what you have. Right? Cause if you bet flop, check turn, you do not have a set most likely, you most likely do not have two pair, you most likely have a pair. Same thing if you bet flop that turn, uh, check river. Uh, now betting eight thousand five hundred while. Not my favorite play, um, I, I do think it has merit, uh. The play does need to work a little over half the time, he will have missed this board more than that. Uh, and you do have a little bit of a backup plan if he calls, you're, you're turning this hand into a bluff, but obviously a turn six or four would. Increases your equity quite dramatically. So. I, I think that has merit, I, I think typically we should check though. So we check and he bets thirty-five hundred. Uh, so. I think. We need to, what do you think we should do? Should we fold? Should we call? Should we raise to eighty-five hundred or should we raise to eleven hundred?
Uh, this is interesting because I think he didn't, let's see if he sticks with it because he said what he was gonna do. Earlier in the video, that's what I would do in this spot, so I'm not gonna give that away, let's see how much people were paying attention. We'll figure that out. Don't think this is the best flop to lead on, I kind of agree. Um, is this spot where we can check raise, looks super strong? Or should we have three below nine? Um, I think that we have too much showdown value here, Marlin, however, if you had a two in check raised. I could get behind that, I tend to do. Check raise bluff bottom pair and check call a lot more. With middle pair myself, because we have so much showdown value. Call for gab, call for BBQ, call for Tika. Looking for an opening hand chart to study with my. Hands with. Yeah. I got team toe ones, but. I don't know where to point you to. For free ones, so. I know some great ones, I know like. Jonathan has some great ones, I know raise your edge has some good ones, I know the team toe ones are very similar to all those. Um, but, uh. I know for a hundred lines plus, uh, the free option for, for coaching.com has charts for that, so we're looking for like. Fifty blinds and less and then twenty-five blinds and less. Um, those, I don't know of any free ones that are good or bad. I'd have to Google and like be some resource for everybody. Uh, check call, check raise is awkward with our stack agreed, fold, their hand isn't gonna prove, you said we can call though. Definitely said that he was check calling, so I choose call. Most of it makes it less likely, so call, 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 call. Check raise the one K yourself. Or to eleven K, I imagine. Am I misreading that? I am misreading that. Self putting the pressure on. Reluctantly call, crazy man, well, so don't see how we can call here, there are so many bad turn cards, it's worth fold. I just think we are too good to fold, too bad to raise. So the only thing left is calling. This is why I don't flap with the garbage, other blinds, or make a pair out and defend it. We gotta get good, we gotta get good at these spots, Cap. We gotta get good at these spots. Um, I think it's a call, he did say call, Mendo's calling. Uh, let's see what he does.
I think. Now, again, on the flop, if you said raise to eleven thousand here, I just turn your hand into a bluff. And then if he calls you to see what you do on the turn, you have some equity. I think that's okay as long as you're prepared to check fold on the turn, I, what I see a lot of people do is they check raise, turn this hand into a bluff. Which is a good idea if you think the guy's like see betting everything and then like folding everything to the check raise. But then the person gets called and, okay, judging by your previous logic, he should have a lot of really good pairs here. And we have second pair with a four kicker, so we're probably not beating those. Uh, so. We should check fold, but a lot of people don't do that, so I tend to recommend against that. Uh, raising eighty-five hundred, I think he's really likely just to call and see what you do on the turn and outplay you, so let's try to stick away from that. If you said fold here, I don't think that's the worst option. It's a lot better than what a lot of people do is they have no real plan for the turn. Uh, and so they just absentmindedly call, but I think we can call if we know what we're doing, which we do. So we call. And the turn is the five of diamonds here, would you like to check? Would you like to bet five thousand? Would you like to bet seventy-five hundred or would you like to bet ten thousand?
Oops, I already have that, no, he says, alright, here we are. I mean, are we, we need to talk about this, I don't think anyone's leading out, right? Like, who was leading out? Cyrus, I told you, I missed it, Cyrus, what'd you tell us? Let's go back up. Five or sevens coming on the turn, he knew it, he did call it. Nothing changed, tech call says Rad Dad, four. Gut shot now, checks is Marlin, yeah, yeah, I mean, we're all checking, right? There's no reason to lead out here, nothing changed. Uh, except we got a little more extra equity, so I think check call. You guys be kidding, I think you guys are on it. Rad Dad, I think you're on it. Cyrus, survivors claiming the fifth, pleading the fifth. Alright, let's check.
The reason I believe you can check call on that flop with the six, four is people. Tend to. Not double barrel as just a complete bluff on this turn as much as they should. Once your stack starts getting a little shorter, so I think that kind of helps you a little bit calling on. Uh, the flop. Uh, I don't think that's necessarily right, I think people could double barrel a little bit more, but for some reason, a lot of people do back off, so I think check here. Uh, would probably be the best option. If you said that five thousand, unfortunately, that really looks like you're trying to buy a showdown with what you have, a weak six. Uh, seventy-five hundred is the same thing, ten thousand is almost as if. It's almost as if we check raise the flop, we're just putting in the bet on the turn, which does have merit, but I, I think you're. Most people just when they're confused now they call, so I wouldn't go down that route. Uh, so. Here. We should check. And he checks behind. And the river's the eight of hearts, now here, would you like to check? Would you like to bet thirty-five hundred? Would you like to bet five thousand or would you like to bet seventy-five hundred?
Hmm, you check the turn, that's a good thing, right? That's a super good thing. So now they check the turn, are we leaning into it? We checking, what we doing? What are we doing? We got a few options here, what do you guys think? What do y'all think? Let me hear it. Five K, you didn't build it. Going for value town. This point I order a cocktail. Marlin going for five K. Five K for you, guys to be kidding. Mendo versus why are you? I feel like you're betting this one. Check call, gave him the turn after a C bet and made love forever, five K for holding these nuts. Okay, and then check for Rad Dad. Check off for Jolly Fish, check and call a half pot or smaller, push and pray poker. Check for Cyrus, here they come, five K, when it goes check on the turn for gab. Check call, says Tika, alright, so. Check, you better order a double, check, check, check call, check call, check call, check call, check call, check call. Okay, cool. So. Uh, he could have the flush, he could have survived, it's definitely possible. So for all those of you who are betting five K, cause there was a decent amount. Here's the age old question, are you betting five K as a bluff? Are you betting five K for value? Want some value from a six and stones to play six, four to begin with. Dodge draw says check. Martin says betting as a bluff, alright, betting is bluff. Betting for value, alright, so then we got the age old question, here's the fork in the road. Four Marlin, if you're betting as a bluff, what is better than you? That is folding, and for those of you betting for value, you didn't build it, what's worse, that's calling. The age old fork in the road. The age-old fork in the road. 6X, is that, that 6X is calling? And considering we have a four kicker, all other 6X beats us. King queen off, ace X with a heart. Ace X with a heart, probably hard to get called by ace high. Okay, might get value from a five that bet flop and magically got there on the turn? Okay, but we're talking about pretty thin, right? Ace two, fives, fours, threes, random seven, five, see, very thin, very thin. Very, 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 very thin. Um, so then I think we just check, because I can't think of too much worse that's calling. It's pretty thin. And we're never getting better to fold, like a king is just never folding, right? Eight, probably not folding if they, some magically backed in, do an eight. Um, so checks definitely right answer, let's find out.
I think if you leave any of those small amounts there, if you bet 3,500, okay, that could be a value bet versus a bad opponent, but this guy isn't a bad opponent, he's really likely to pick up on you have something here. Uh, just weak and perhaps could raise you off of that. Uh, it's the same thing with 5,000, if you bet 7,500, it is a very, uh, what weaker hand are we gonna get called by, right? It's gonna be tough, I, I, I guess maybe like ace two.
Oh, so thanks for hanging out, bud, good to see you, man.
That seems like a stretch from a good player, so I think we do have to check here. And we check and he goes ahead and he bets 7,000. Now here, would you like to fold? Would you like to call? Would you like to raise to 15K, or would you like to raise all in?
So this is where things get a little sticky, for sure. For sure, for sure. Bubba says, you better get a screenshot, K six of them, I believe this. It's a miracle, you didn't know, it's like, ay, ay, ay. Why didn't I, why didn't I bet and find out where I was? Yeah, seat bet, half pot. What do you guys think? I feel like nobody's raising, right? We can take those out, it's pretty much call or fold at this point, I would think we all kind of agree on that, right? Damn half pot is a value, whoa, alright, so jamming as a bluff, right, Marlon, to get an eight to fold? Yay, 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 crying golf, you didn't know that jellyfish calling, BBQ calling. Toes, cry calling, he's too sticky. We checked twice. I'm a station, so I'd probably call, which is another reason why I don't play that hand passively from the jump street. I think you should call and induce bluffs, and look at all these tens, cap. Look at all these tens, there's so many tens. Why am I calling here, in my opinion? I am calling here because I think we induce bluffs. I think if he's got ace high or some random this shit, he's got a bluff river cuz he's got no showdown value. I think he's got far fewer kings, and it's kinda hard for him to have an eight. Um, but a fold here is interesting, because of the heart cut there. But again, like, we should probably bet the hearts, if we had the hearts, we would bet, because we don't want them to check behind. Especially after we check, call flop, check, check turn, right? So they're gonna check behind a ton, right? Um, so we would bet if we had the flush alive. So it says toe calling and putting it in the break video, fair. Mouse Anderson, thank you for the follow, buddy, welcome. He can bluff with every ace, eight hearts versus, yeah, absolutely. We're calling for the toe equity, I love it, I, I'm calling. Um, although, I'm not sure what it says, I was gonna go with the mons. My fault cuz the heart cut there, but I'm calling, I think we induced the bluffs, we gotta call. How about some superpolarizing, but I can't cook pot on the turn. 3,500 too, so this is 3,500 live tournament, the players are gonna be a little better. So if this was like some smaller buy-in live tournament or most tournaments online, I think the half pot bet is not really much of anything, I think it's the most overused size, or over, yeah, overused bet size in poker. They do it in the bluff, they do it for value, they don't get max value, they don't get away cheaper, like, there's no art to this, click half pot and enter. Type randomly into your phone, sit and wait for some sort of response that will help you look super happy and super stuff, because I'm calling. So what does this plus online for, what does equal for online buy-in? Uh, one of the higher buy-ins, for sure. I had in my mind I would've called up to 10K, so it's cap, yeah. 10K be tough. I might be more inclined to fold 10K, I think half pot, I'm just calling. He checked turn, he shouldn't have a king. Sometimes he's gonna have like pocket jacks, pocket tens, pocket nines, sure. Um, but I think we have to call and risk, we have to risk our perfect score. Alright, let's do it.
Okay, if you guys said fold on this river, that is absolutely fine, that's what you should be doing most of the time. Uh, your preflop call was fine, especially if you had some check raising game, call on the flop, I think is very safe. Uh, because people tend to not double barrel on the turn as much as they should as an absolute bluff. I think a call is not my favorite play in the world, because I, I think the bet check that line tends to be value and you don't really beat anything in his value betting range. Uh, raise to 15K, I just kinda put that there. Uh, I, I think it pretty much just value, I think you just give more value to his whole range, so I wouldn't do that. The play I really wanted to introduce here is a play, I don't get to do as much anymore, but I have great success teaching it to players that people do not think could be bluffing, right? So there is age prejudice in poker, and there's a lot of times that a young guy will just not believe that someone above the age of 50 could be ripping a big bluff on them, right? So that really can be a big deal in this situation, because a lot of young guys have never checked back a flusher on the turn in their life. It's just not something they do. Uh, they're very likely to bet a flusher on the turn, right? Especially if they think you're calling out of the big blind and you might be calling with some high cards and stuff like that, so especially if you observe this behavior, this is amazing in card rooms, where you can watch, you know, you're playing cash or you can watch live streams and you can watch a guy over and over and over again, you might find he never checks back a draw on the turn. So if you have a guy that never checks back a draw on the turn, what can he not have on this river? He can't have the flush, right? He, so he probably would've bet as really good kings on the turn, uh, so what does that leave him? It, it leaves him something like jacks or queens or tens or ace six, some, something that or maybe he has like eight, nine of spades, he missed on the flop, gave up on the turn, now he's going for a little value on the river cuz he thinks he would've let the king, but the, the big flushes aren't there, right? This is something I have, my senior citizens do is go, ah, I'm all in, or something like that, right? And they think like it's the biggest, like, oh my god, you so gave away, you have a flush here, right? And you'll see guys just like turn over, even like a king, ten and mock, right? And I just, I love that play, I tend to not, I used to get away with this a lot, like years and years ago. I'm really scared to do that now, just because people call me so much, but I have had success teaching this to players that look a little bit more honest, right? Uh, I hope this one serves you well, guys.
So, here's my problem, he said raise here, are we raising for value, returning a six of a bluff? I, I kinda disagree with this one, I kinda disagree with this one. Marlon says it's a fun age to be on 50 plus all the discounts. You get the cheap seats in Sizzler. Alright, guys, volume was good today, yeah, that was because we didn't have the Skype call with sixes, so we definitely figured out what the problem is, I will work with sixes this week to figure that out, cuz even the Asasana clips were good. Um, and they were, actually sounded better on my end too, um, so it affects the overall volume. Uh, Tika says all in, wow, yeah, that's a stretch for me. That is a stretch, Tika Sasiado went like out of the box in the left field. No cheap seats at Sizzler, what the fuck? Holding nuts. What the fuck? Time was awesome today, I'm glad, alright, so we'll definitely work out, we'll try like, maybe we'll try it with a Discord call and then that doesn't work. Maybe I'll have to bring up his uh, his stream and all that, is there still business? I don't know, actually, I don't know, is there a Sizzler in Vegas, Marlon? I don't think I've seen one, I know there's still some in all that. Tika says let's know when they're over 50 so we can watch. They're all equally affordable, I get it, I get it, not a lot of time, not a lot of money. Alright, so that's a wrap, that's a wrap. The Saturday Study Session Stream is a wrap. Thank you for all the follows, thank you for the hosts, thank you for all the viewers, guys, we had a lot of viewers today, that was fun. Um, if you have not hit the follow button, please hit that follow button. Little heart-shaped icon somewhere over here, and uh, the Saturday Study Session Stream, we do every Saturday, noon Eastern, me, my boy Crazy Sixes do it together, um, I record them, like I said, they go up on the YouTube channel, if you missed the beginning of this and you wanna catch up, you have some questions, put them in the comments, I'll get back to you. Um, you can like and subscribe there as well, I have every Study Session Stream you've ever done, plus highlight reels and tutorials and all that kinda stuff, check that out. Cyrus putting the PC in the jacket, he the man, if you'd like to sign up for free, you get twenty quizzes, a bunch of homeworks, some stuff, some charts, check it out, or if you're so inclined, you can sign up for the premium version, get a shitload, over 750 quizzes, homeworks, webinars, chats, tons and tons of stuff, all that out there for you, make sure you take advantage. You guys to be kidding, make sure you come back, buddy, we do it every Saturday, this is volume eighteen or so. Um, so make sure you check those out, and if you wanna check them out on YouTube, it's there. We just gotta, so let me say that, thank you real quick. Well, harder, thank you for the follow, buddy, welcome, welcome. Also, we'll be back tomorrow, actually playing on a little bit of a delay, but we're playing all the big guarantees on all the sites, playing on global, playing on wsop.com, because we live in Las Vegas, playing on ACR, playing on BetOnline, all that going down tomorrow as well. So make sure you tune in for that, and I think I'm playing Monday too, because Marlon did King Day and we're off work, so there you go. Um, that's it, I'm gonna throw the host over to my good friend, No Limit Tony D, cuz I've missed him and he's a good, good guy. So we're outta here, we're gonna go hang out with this toe and then watch Connor and Biga fight. Uh, Marlon, I'll get back to you, she's pretty sick today, so I don't mind if you come over, but uh, let me just make sure, because I don't know if you wanna go over, while she's got the play, so, um, I'll text you, buddy. Cap's gonna start watching the live streams, you do, buddy, you do, we're missing you. You guys to be kidding, thank you for that follow as well, throwing the host over to Tony D and I'm out, peace.
Told it, we like that. We like that, that's what I'm talking about, right there.